Maybe they'll get a little pal for you. Like two weeks. That's what you should have.
What?
Oh, yeah.
Backstreet morning.
Oh, yeah.
Backstreet morning.
Must've been research about other people.
Couldn't.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Somewhere on my computer. I'm searching like.
She said.
Somewhere on my computer. I'm searching like.
Whatever they can. Who did you say?
Cause I was looking at.
It was out. It was.
Sure.
I was around.
No.
Can you say your name? Not your name. Yeah. That's okay. So hopefully. Did you say your name? Just a word of that. Tell me.
Cause we don't have. If somebody just.
I know.
Cause I'm. Cause I'm.
That's.
Tells me it's possible. Anytime. Anytime.
What? Right.
Which makes sense. Wonder if it has to be like.
Yeah.
And then you show the process.
My password.
Yeah.
You thought you were clear.
I thought I was gonna do this.
Oh, gosh.
It's just an English thing.
Oh.
And I'm like, um, stop doing that. And then in the dark, you know, all it's gonna come up and say, no, 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 no. Shit.
All right. We're good.
The time of seven thirty has arrived, so I will call this meeting to order. Would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is roll call, please.
Mayor Terry Wyckes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Stießsager.
Here.
Councilmember Darryl Gardner.
Here.
Councilmember Toni Ulliman.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce Seela.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Weisenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Jacqueline Wells.
Here.
I'm sorry, my computer just.
Good job.
Does everybody tonight?
Wow, what the world.
Copy?
Yeah, here in a second. I'm sorry about that. The next thing on our agenda is the consent agenda and. Is what? Oh, excuse me, the agenda. To approve the agenda, Councilman Weisenberg.
I move to approve the agenda of regular city council meeting minute or meeting of January seventh, twenty twenty-five as presented.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the agenda for January seventh, twenty twenty-five as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Yay.
Yay.
Online voting has closed. A motion passes with seven yays.
All right, thank you. Next thing on our agenda is the consent agenda. Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to approve the consent agenda, regular city council meeting, January seventh, twenty twenty-five as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the consent agenda for the regular city council meeting on January seventh, twenty twenty-five as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Yay.
Yay.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. A motion passes with seven yays.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is a public hearing. I will open up a public hearing at this time to. Concerning the approval of the new application for bingo pull tabs gaming license application for the Rollins Senior Center Advisory Committee. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on that subject? Seeing nobody, I will close that public hearing. We will move on to the next thing on the agenda, which is citizens' participation. This is a. A time set aside by resolution number two C dash nineteen ninety-six. It's a time set aside for the public comment of five minutes or less to approach and speak to the city council about things that are not on the agenda. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to us at this time? Seeing none, we will move on to the next thing on our agenda, which is a. Reports and information, and I will start with the DDA Main Street and Hub reports. I will turn the floor over to Director Pam Thayer.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. In front of you, you guys have kind of a big packet, but I wanted you guys to have it start of the year, starting new. In the packet, you have a business card, you have a tear away, the tear away is just hasn't been updated for twenty twenty-five yet. We have quite a some new businesses in the downtown that'll be added, and then the art tour, just some information. But just real briefly, I do, this is the Board of Directors really just again. Knowledge and making sure, just information. So the packet I put together is just our creation. Again, we are created as a downtown development authority by city ordinance. It's in there, the vision, the mission, and just other pages, I think, that are questions. Sometimes you guys have a city council, and also for the new council, they have the packet that'll be sworn in tonight. The actual boundaries, again, this is a special district, and we run off state statute. There is a flow chart of how we work, which is pretty interesting, and there's a lot of components to the DDA. It talks about the Main Street approach, which originally, as you can see, we started in nineteen ninety-one as a downtown development authority, and then in two thousand and six, we started using the Main Street methodology. So you have the Main Street approach in there. I did for your for your records, you have the ordinance in there. You have this, our bylaws, and then the last thing is you have the Main Street America and its approach and lessons learned. And so just a packet for you guys to go through. The Board of Directors, I know that there's a lot of learning and different things happening at the beginning of the year, but the Board of Directors would like to get on you guys' calendar to have you over to the Rainbow Teton or the Hub for dinner and really kind of go over. We did a strategic planning session on December eighteenth for about five hours. It was really good session and really looking at some of you guys' some of the goals of the city and just really taking on what we plan to do for the next two years. So again, my cards in there, email, cellphone, call me, but we just thought it was a really good way, the board thought it was a really good way to start the year out with good information on the organization. Any questions?
Where are we at on the lights and the interchanges?
Yeah, so as you can see, we, there are a few lone souls that wanted to stay Christmas. I've like tried to, you have to do it at night, so you can see last night I was, my husband thought I was crazy. So the streetlights are almost all fixed. There's a couple red and green out there, even tonight, my husband was giving me a hard time. I think we have our final six we have to fix that are not working, besides the two, three poles that are, four poles that are down. But we have started the one calls and starting moving forward to have construction for the summer for the intersection crosses. And it's so cool, because in about another two weeks, I'll do another color change for Valentine's Day, and I did it in front of a gentleman last night, and as he was driving up Fifth, and I didn't mean to, I didn't think I was gonna scare him, and he slammed on his brakes, like, cause right when he was driving by, he turned it, and I don't know why he slammed on his brakes, but slammed on his brakes right when I flipped the light bulb. Actually kind of fun. Okay, any other questions?
Anybody else? Thank you, Pam.
Yep, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, next thing on our agenda is city manager and staff reports, and I'll turn the floor over to you, Tom.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and members of the council. We have one staff report that we'd like to share with you as we as we begin tonight, so we'd invite Cody Dill, our Public Works Director, come forward, and he's gonna give you an update about the water breaks and the different infrastructure issues that we've had.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. Just figured with our most recent water break, I'd come and give a quick report of just water breaks of lately. Since our our bad break we had on Labor Day weekend of six breaks, we've had about approximately twenty different breaks through this season coming into the wintertime. It usually happens a lot in spring and fall. This is a little bit more than most. Some of these, they vary between service lines, you know, between the main and our curb stops. There's been a lot of little ones like that, but we have had other ones within our four, six, and eight inch lines. And they're usually in spots that are notorious for breaking. We know that the pipes are in very poor conditions. Some of the holes we've been in three times in the same hole within four to five feet of it within a month span. We just have some really bad areas in town, and we're really kind of seeing what's seeing the effects of just the long term and the end of life of some of these sections of town. But this most recent one was a little bit more difficult. It was on the larger scale size, and I think it was more pronounced because of its location in town. We've had some big ones, but probably not seen by our public. The twenty inch line was a pretty big one we had, but we didn't really see how much water was lost there. Here in the middle of town, we got to see it. This twelve inch line is the line that connects our two tanks, the hospital tank to the Painted Hills tank. And on this break, it was a spiral fracture off of a tap that that came off of the old Pink Hotel. We think that there was a flaw in the original tap, and eventually that that pipeline can fluctuate from anywhere from a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty PSI. And we just think over the years that it just hit a point where it just gave loose, and the crack was about an inch wide and about eight feet long over the top of it. The one hard part about it is in that line, there is only certain valves to get the two tanks shut down and get that line that line. Shut down where the water can quit flowing. One of the valve sets that we had to shut down was in the middle of Washington Park that hadn't been touched in a long time, and the only person that knew about it was our senior operator, Bud Demick. And he came out, it was on our GIS, but from where it was at on our GIS, it was there about fifty feet away, and it took our guys with metal detectors in the middle of the night, a little while to figure out where it was at and dig it up and get that shut down. And with that, we lost a pretty considerable amount of water on that water break as the public saw. It was about one point eight million gallons. So we, with that break, we we took the taps off that line so that we we can actually use taps from a four inch line that's there if anybody wants to build later on or add to it, but try to take as many taps off that line as we can. But it was, that one was just where it was at in town was just right in the middle of public's eye, and we just want everybody to know that we were on top of it the whole time, and it was just. One of the bigger ones that we've had this year, but our crews are on top of it and worked it from, I think, nine thirty that night till about four o'clock the next afternoon. The hard part with this one, too, was there was a telephone pole right next to it, within about three feet. It took Rocky Mountain Power, they got there about six o'clock in the morning, so we couldn't really touch anything till about six, six thirty in the morning, start digging on that to do the repair. So there was a few little extenuating circumstances that took us a little while to get this one fixed. But like I said, with our, the great crews that we have, they stuck with it, stuck with it all night, all afternoon, until everybody got their water back on. We had a big portion of the town shut down originally because they weren't quite sure what valves it was gonna take to get this isolated. After we figured out the valving to get it isolated, we got majority of the town back on by about midnight, two o'clock in the morning, and we only had really the apartments in the senior center out off of that line. So. That's kind of really my update for this big water break that we've had in recent. You guys have any questions?
We checked the snow outside. How are we doing on the snowpack outside?
Um, you know, I'll have to look into that and get back with you. I know that's something that I'm very worried about, but with our recent snows, I'm hopeful that that we're getting some kind of snowpack. I know from residents that I've been talking to, they've been able to drive all the way out to Sage Creek as of, you know, a week ago, so I'm hoping we're getting some accumulation now.
Councilman Weisenberg?
With that concern, I just wanna make it known, though, that the snowpack is run on a two-year supply within the the springs, so I wouldn't project if we don't have a great snowpack year right now. I would not project that to be of a major concern for at least a year to a year and a half, right, possibly then. So it's something that I would try and keep an eye on then, but I think the city, if that's the case, it's not a major snowpack. The city should probably start trying to work with the state a little bit and see if they plan on seeding and stuff like that, because, I mean, rumor mill, you know how that works, but they're talking about seeding because of snowpack.
I believe they did, yeah.
That'll help out, too. But just to keep in mind, you know, you run on a two-year supply of the springs, so.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Cody.
Thank you, Cody. A couple dates for council to remember here. The city of Rollins facilities will be closed on Monday, January twentieth, in observance of Martin Luther King Day. Everything will reopen Tuesday, January twenty-first, as as normal. President Biden has declared January ninth as a federal holiday for the death of Jimmy Carter, President Carter. The city offices will be open on that day through that day, even though it is a federal holiday. Each year, within our city ordinance, we, I am required to present to council a review of the fees that the city charges. So my intent at this point will be to have a work session at the January twenty-first meeting that we will look at the rates. This is quite an undertaking, and if this, and if this doesn't work out for that time, if it's not prepared, I will get with the mayor and see if we want to do a special meeting, but my intent right now is to do it as the work session at the January twenty-first meeting. I have received a draft of our audit report, and so I will do the management discussion analysis transmitter letter, and then I will email that out to council. Once I get that, we'll put it on our website for the community to look at, and then we will do a review of that audit at the twenty-first meeting for council to approve. The last date that I have is, WHAM this year, is gonna be held in Cheyenne on January twenty-second, twenty-third, and twenty-fourth, I believe. It's that Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of that week. And so I will be out of the office for that, and I will put Lou Liscano, the Community Development Director, in charge those days when I am out. So if the community or staff has issues, they can reach him first, and then he'll be able to reach me. So. With that, that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Next thing on our agenda is city attorney report. Do you have anything for us?
Honorable Mayor, just one short update. I have still been working on the nuisances. It is a big process, and I will be setting up a work session with the council. But as a caveat, there are also other logistical issues involved that I'll discuss during the work session that involve some of the other organizational changes that are occurring. So that will be on the horizon. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next thing on the agenda is direction from city council to city manager. Does anybody have anything? Councilman Weisenberg?
Yeah, I just wanna say, right now, just take the time to say thanks to the public, Tom, Anita. It's been a pleasure working with you all. I appreciate everything we've done and accomplished. It's been a lot of accomplishments, a lot of heartache, a lot of ups and downs on the for the last four years, but I've learned a lot, grew a lot. I come in knowing a lot of problems that was going on, too, and I think we've accomplished a lot of stuff, you know. This council has accomplished a lot, and it might not seem like it with a lot of stuff going on, but we've put a lot of money into the water system. We've accomplished Title Nineteen almost totally getting redone. Lots of different things, lots of businesses come into our community, Maverick, let's see, Starbucks, there's been multiple daycares from planning and zoning approvals, stuff like that that I said on there, too. But I just wanna say thanks, thanks to the public, thanks to the city staff for your hard work, dedication to the city, and continue on, and appreciate the council working with you all, so.
Thank you. I also would like to say that it's been nothing but an honor and a privilege to be the mayor of Rollins for the last four years. It's been challenging, yes, it has. It's not an easy job. I don't think it was intended to be, but I got a chance to work with some of the most amazing people ever, the staff, most of the council, the. The employees of the city are just unbelievable. I don't know how many awards in the four years that the city staff has received, anywhere from local to state to national awards, but we we have an amazing amount of amazing quality of people that work for this city. It's been a pleasure most of the time to to sit in this seat, and again, thank you. And that's all I have. Anybody else? All right. We will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is executive session. I will entertain a motion. Councilman Wells?
I moved to enter into executive session at seven fifty-one PM per Wyoming statute sixteen four four oh five to consider or receive any information classified as confidential by law.
Second.
In a motion made and seconded, enter into executive session at seven fifty-one, was that correct? PM per Wyoming statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five to consider or receive any information classified as confidential by law. Is there any discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Yay.
Yay.
Online voting has closed. A motion passes with seven yays.
All right, thank you.
I did, that's what I adjusted.
Join your meeting?
Yes. Oh, it stays the same meeting. Holy cow, I kept looking at updates. Are we starting? Zero, 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 zero.
She thinks I'm very weird.
I do.
But sometimes I go, not very much.
But by the time he's got his brother's house there, so he didn't want to open any. They have my brother. Yeah.
I'll go on occasion.
Oh, you're going out?
Yeah, oh, yes.
Is it 10:20? Is it 2:20 or 2:20? 2:20, this is uh, 80 square? I can't remember.
She's probably, she's probably.
They're excited. Yeah.
I guess, I guess.
I know.
We were miles.
Which, he's in the left side, he's just looking at us, turn the other way. And then he goes on.
It was Ross.
We could, we could, we could, we could.
Yeah.
Ground said, yeah. He even says it now.
You can just see it. No. I don't know why I did just that.
Yeah.
No, I'm not moving, where you're waiting for.
Yeah.
There you go. There you go.
Did you get the old one slayed? I'm like, is he like, you mind where I am?
Bye, have fun. Mommy, the walkers.
So this is like, she, yeah, so she, they go back in. Yeah. That's my, that's my accident, second.
Huh? Yes, Barbara.
And the thing is, I just don't know if I get it or not and that's why I try to get it. I don't know.
Apparently I, I was pretty to the house. I don't ever say, um, she swears on my ass.
Is he, is he gaslighting you for that?
Seriously, it's not. It was really, I was mad about the guy.
Oh, you were very frustrated.
It's not, it's the second.
First Tuesday, the first Wednesday, good New Year, sorry. I know, I know, we started, I'm sorry.
Oh, well.
No, I just sent, I just sent, I said, yes, I'm doing the drugs. I said, I just got everything set, but I'm in the city council, so it's not going out.
Billis. I think there's a force of, 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 Friday's true take. In case I don't get this, yeah, I think so much to you, too, or we could, too late. Well, in the line. That's why I try to.
Slot in the white bush. Outside, you know, where?
I just, but I mean, I just care.
Well, then just hold on to it. Hi.
Hi.
There's lots of seeds. Yeah, no, no. You make it.
It's minus three, feel. I got a heavy coat in the back. Well, see, I did layers because I knew I was showing the balls walking. And I didn't know how cold it was. I checked, I checked. Look, she's got a, I'm sure. They're lying to go. You're, you're, you're checking. I have a really, that you were. You know, you go, you invent as you go along. Go for your rights. I feel sure I can see. Of all nights, you might spend like this.
Three programs.
She's watching.
To the.
She's.
If I find a.
He texted me before he called me.
And.
She's.
I always.
I'm.
I can feel the.
All the.
People.
But I got it.
I'm getting.
But.
It's just.
And it never.
No.
See.
Watching.
I clearly.
All of these.
Yeah.
Well, in a long time, I won't get that. I won't take that skip. Or I mean.
Set.
I don't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have to be careful.
Yeah, you never know.
But.
Yeah.
You're.
Well, that would say something.
We're just.
I just.
Know this.
I'll be the cat.
Three wrong.
I'm.
Working.
Your presence.
There's a.
They're.
Remember we.
We.
So I need.
I heard.
Ray.
They were.
She can walk.
Door.
I don't.
And she.
You can do nothing.
I said.
I'm over there.
You say, well, look so good. You did such a good job.
I have.
Did you text me? Tell me. Did you text me and say you were inside?
Yeah.
I went to finance in the quarter. I was gonna be here.
Early.
Cause I'm.
I'm just.
You.
No. I said, I know.
All of the.
And I'm.
Twenty three.
And I'm not gonna be different now. I have. I'm gonna be different. Even more than that. Cause he could be.
He'd be.
Back.
You can.
I see.
I don't.
I didn't like.
I'm.
I might.
I'm not.
I'm not.
I do.
I was like.
I was like.
I.
I love it.
We're not much efficient. We have the same.
It's where.
Two. One kid. That's where.
Something happens.
You pop it.
One scene now.
Six persons like that.
Very good.
What was his graduation?
I don't know.
I'm trying to watch.
Thank you.
Plus.
I'm actually.
I found a guy.
Most potential.
Yes.
Please.
I have to go.
Just.
I know.
I know.
I can feel like.
I'm.
Oh, yeah.
Right after.
It breaks down.
And then.
This is.
And then.
Like.
No.
Or this.
Meltdown.
I think I'm perfect.
And not just.
I just like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought maybe it was just my house.
I said something. Cause I had my.
His.
Went out long. Just telling his.
Screw everything up.
You put my.
My.
Turn the light on in the. I mean.
Extra.
Yeah.
She's.
So it was like.
I was.
Like see your. My. Both my kids were. And I. I turned. Dislocated. So. My ability to not have. The.
Exactly.
So we can.
We're out.
Well, this is what.
Twenty.
Bad. If I. If I had done. Move. Yes.
As well.
And mom goes. She's. You know, and someone tells you. You could lay outside. And. But I said, you cannot. When you're sitting. Outside. She was. Two. And I said. I'm not giving you back. Another two hours. And. If I don't come back. You're gonna be. These are. My child.
Turned out.
Yeah.
He.
He discovered.
He has one.
I know.
I tried to.
Cause I.
It's.
First.
We started.
I like.
I like.
That.
I watch.
You will have.
It's.
It needs a mark.
No.
I like it.
I see.
So skinny.
See, it's just.
That's more.
Yeah.
I'm sure they.
I just don't understand why.
Did you?
You. I showed. And then you had a talking. But I tried to answer this. We want. Outside. I tried. How I. I don't. So he said. She just. Right. They call me. My child.
So.
Was.
I'm not. Everything told me. They not.
Nothing.
To the free house.
Is that.
No.
I. But anyway, they gave me this big line. We have. We have. Toyota. It's hard to free. We.
Well.
I'm. I was. Well, what's that? I wanted. I want. But.
Well, I love.
I said. They stand it out. From underneath. Standing.
We should.
Yeah, but they. They're. They just. You know, they're trying to.
We never. Don't do this.
They can't. I don't know.
Yes.
Which is when it's out of. I've got two. And some of this. Cash for. We just. So. I had to set up. A caster. But I. This is. I got it. This heart. Me. I. Was because. And I said. So. One. I'm. But I said. He's. So. I don't. I don't. I just. Be. What if the. She was. Not. Take. She's. Right. But. So. So. But not. I must.
Where's he?
I. I'm not. Here. Oh. It's. Mercedes. Cause I. I just can't. This is. I. I guess.
Have you.
I'm gonna have to get.
He's.
Now.
I guess.
It's hard to release it. They. They. Will I do. I just. Drive. I said, no. We can. So then.
Yeah.
What?
Somewhere.
Um. So.
I'm. I just have. I don't. Yeah.
You know. How I am.
You see that? That's good. Yeah. So.
Uh.
This wasn't.
You're.
We.
I just. Yeah. Oh, that's good.
What's.
And we.
Did you get some.
I don't. Yeah. This is. Yeah. And then. It's. You. I don't know. But you. Like.
Yeah. You all know. Yeah. So.
Right?
I can't see.
It was.
We have. So we. So like. More. We. So. I. But yeah. I.
That's right.
But. Yeah. Yeah. Of course. You know.
What do you think?
Yes. But I.
I took it.
Chanel.
Yeah. There's the.
No. So. Yeah. There only. Mine. Yeah. Not.
Oh, it's.
Yeah.
After quite a. Collaboration, maybe.
My. Good.
Now I'm up here.
Oh, I don't. We missed.
The director.
Any.
Well, they made me.
Yeah, cause. I. I told him.
So. I've had. I've got. Now.[1532.54]
So.
Yep.
That's.
One day.
Yeah.
We'll.
We'll see.
I'm afraid the legal.
So.
If Tom was here.
I would.
Because.
You.
Very.
Oh, God.
So.
She's.
She's.
No.
Well.
She's.
Yeah.
She does.
Yeah.
So.
So.
But.
Yeah.
Go to Italy and not.
I'm.
Yeah.
I don't.
A half cup pasta.
I mean.
I like this.
I frankly.
That's positive.
To work.
With.
Questions.
Why?
You.
That's where I go.
She knows like all.
She know.
That's.
The.
She.
I'm not.
Say things.
Yeah.
I don't think.
I.
She's.
I.
It's.
So.
Yeah.
You're like.
There's.
Different.
Different.
And.
Yeah.
That you could.
I ate it.
This one.
Do you see?
My.
I love.
Let me get up before.
She's out of here.
Yeah.
She's.
Yeah.
You sound like me.
I don't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
I don't.
So.
Go home.
You just.
That's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be bad.
I'm.
She hasn't been.
Let's.
Yeah.
Look at that.
Hold.
That.
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah.
So.
You did last time.
But.
All.
I got.
Sorry.
Oh.
This.
Oh.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Really?
Okay.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
She be.
I would.
I have to do.
See.
Yeah.
They don't work.
That's why.
I'm.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah.
Six.
Today.
Yeah.
She's.
Just.
She.
Oh.
She's.
So.
She's.
One.
W.
She's.
Oh.
But.
It's.
Well.
Three.
Three favor.
We have ourselves.
Who's.
She's.
Mm hmm.
That's.
Yeah.
Here's.
And.
Little.
She's.
She knows.
It's.
One.
I.
I.
She's.
She has.
She's.
That's.
She's.
I.
I.
Oh.
She's.
That's.
Yeah.
What?
What?
I.
She.
Five.
Five eighteen.
I go.
I can.
On the band.
And watch something.
It's just that I.
Hook up to my home wifi.
Can't.
He asked.
You.
You.
Why?
Cook out.
And to.
No matter where you are.
Sorry.
She says.
Watch TV.
But she.
No.
Because it's.
Go up to your.
Why?
You can't.
There.
I don't.
Except.
For.
One.
So.
So.
Where.
Why?
I couldn't do that.
And.
Okay.
Which.
But I can't.
See.
I.
See.
Yeah.
To your local wifi.
I can't.
Because.
I'm.
So.
I.
I.
I watch.
My.
TV.
There's.
Or.
I can give.
I.
Like.
Screen.
So.
They all.
They all.
They.
I.
Can't.
Oh.
The.
So.
That's.
The.
I can't.
I can't.
I can watch.
Four.
Nine.
I can.
But I can watch.
But I can't.
And I can't.
Watch.
Which I probably.
So.
We have.
Those two I tried to watch.
And.
Two.
So.
And.
See.
Watch.
When I get rid of.
When I get rid of it.
Make sure.
Whenever I get.
Wasn't.
Yeah.
See.
Yeah.
I know.
I.
Now.
Watching.
I can't.
Cate.
Does.
I.
On.
Yeah.
I don't.
That's.
I.
Now.
So.
I.
And.
And.
So.
I.
I.
If I.
First.
I think that I'm.
Thirty.
Seven.
And.
It's.
Years.
I just don't get Stan when they advertise.
I.
I.
Even when I'm here.
I.
So.
I.
Watched.
And.
It was.
Three days.
So.
That's.
So.
So.
Channel.
That's.
You.
I did.
Yeah.
This.
Fifteen.
So.
It's.
I.
Yeah.
I.
I didn't.
I can't.
Get.
Yeah.
But I'll.
Maybe.
He's gonna go.
See.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I.
Judge.
I can watch.
Seven.
Nine.
Today.
You should.
I.
It gives you.
Visual list.
Yes.
It says.
It's.
About.
I.
Okay.
It's on there.
It's like.
Because then you.
Soon.
I was like.
This is.
It's.
It's.
Be able.
Play.
And know that you always.
Yeah.
That's not true.
I.
I know.
I'm.
You.
Yeah.
Proceed.
You.
Yeah.
I know.
And now.
I said.
See.
Oh.
Woo.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's.
Yeah.
You can.
So.
Any of those.
They.
Yes.
So.
Sure.
See.
All.
When you're.
See.
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 Yeah.
I'm.
As.
The internet.
Yeah.
I.
She.
Gas.
Yeah.
Did you?
Yeah.
I.
Yeah.
This.
What?
Oh.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
We got.
I'm.
And they were.
Dollars.
And they.
Yeah.
And she.
Yeah.
And.
I know.
It's.
Quiet.
Yeah.
So.
Well.
Did you?
I.
There's.
I.
I.
Was it?
She.
That.
She.
I.
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 Right.
But.
And.
You.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why?
This.
I.
I.
That's.
Yeah.
And.
I.
I.
Too.
Sure.
Two.
Right.
I.
I mean.
So.
She.
I was thinking recently.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I was.
Well.
Well.
I.
Yeah.
I.
It was double.
Because.
I.
The.
Whoa.
She.
They.
She.
Rest.
It's.
I.
I.
Yes.
I.
I.
I said.
It was.
Not.
I.
I.
Where?
I.
Yeah.
Sure.
Right.
That's been like.
Yes.
Um.
Yes.
I.
But.
I kind of.
Think.
See.
Mostly.
Like.
Stretching.
I see that.
Do you have?
I.
No.
How would you?
Okay.
I.
I.
She.
Here.
She looks at it.
Oh.
Yeah.
No.
But I was.
She.
I.
Hi.
Yeah.
Well.
I.
Oh.
We're.
I'm. A while. I'm with you.
Oh.
So.
Hi.
I like.
Yeah.
Top.
Off.
Damn. Hey. One more.
Everybody was present for all three? Okay. It's good to know.
All right. Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to come out of executive session for Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five at eight forty-four P M.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to come out of executive session for Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five at
Eight forty-four.
Eight forty-four P M. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Yay.
Online voting is open.
Get your sacred bow.
Online voting has closed, the motion passes with seven days.
Oh, this stupid thing. Councilman Wells?
I move to approve the executive session minutes of December third, twenty twenty-four, regular city council meeting as presented.
Second.
My computer. I'm sorry. My computer keeps shutting off, so I have to start it all over. There was a motion made and seconded to approve the executive session minutes for December third, twenty twenty-four, as presented. Is there any discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Yay.
Online voting has closed, the motion passes with seven days.
All right, thank you. Councilman Lumen?
Move to approve the executive session minutes of December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, regular city council meeting as presented.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve the executive session minutes of December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, regular city council meeting as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Yay. Yay.
Online voting has closed, the motion passes with seven days.
All right, thank you. Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to approve executive session minutes of January seventh, twenty twenty-five, regular city council meeting as presented.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve the executive session minutes of January seventh, twenty twenty-five, regular city council meeting as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Yay.
Online voting has closed, the motion passes with seven days.
All right, thank you. Councilman Wells?
I motion to terminate the Rollins Rochelle Golf Course concessionaire Agreement due to material breach of the concessionaire agreement.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to terminate the Rollins Rochelle Golf Course concessionaire Agreement due to the material breach of the concessionaire agreement. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please do you want to voice vote, or do you want? Uh, yes, please.
Mayor Terry Wytham?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Steve Sanger?
Yes.
Councilmember Daryl Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Chris Weisenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce Steele?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanya Lumen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jack
Yes.
All right, thank you. Councilman Garner?
On the, I made a mistake. I was here for the December third meeting, but I, I didn't join that meeting. I was only here for the ending of it.
Yeah.
I need to vote no. If that's
Abstain.
Or abstain, yes.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I will declare a recess and we will at eight forty-nine and we will have the oath of office for our new council.
How long is the recess? How long would the recess? How long is the recess?
Till they're done swearing them in.
Okay.
Well, we can't be in recess while they're swearing.
Okay, so
That's okay, just give us five minutes.
Okay, five minutes recess.
So Steve, so I call so I call this back to order and then so when I call it back to order? Say I call this meeting back to order and turn the floor over to
Right.
So what time do you call this? So close, I could see the finish line.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah. Make sure your shirt is tucked in because they will butt you in the seat to pick up and everything else. I quick up before I go into the door.
Yeah, I know.
Close. I don't know. Well, you know there's a lot of the old rich guys, they were just like, I can't walk. I knew several of them were pounding that way. I don't know if you knew Bob Stratten or not. Came to the Skyline, he was gone. He walked in the Skyline in front, I was in back. Walked in the front of there and told me, he said, well, you got the picker. He's always out there, he's a front foot, he's all day, he says, that's all I want. He says, I took a bit of tree picker right there. He said, you understand, you have to get ready for it, or pick it up. Get it to get ready, you know, pick it later. Oh, boy, you started laughing, he's asking. You can't afford to do that now. He says, go on next bet. Says there ain't no way, he says, probably the best. Got the taxiway, forty about two quarters, I'm dead.
I took me on back to show me what I could afford. And that's when I thought when I was seven or six years old, red with the lights and ten hundred fifteens. And I told everybody, they're all service companies, so I went up there and I said, that's what I can afford.
All right. I will call this meeting back to order and turn the, turn the floor over to Vice Mayor Sanger.
Thank you. We'll be doing the oath of office at this particular time. We're going to do them in on a logical order, I guess, if you want to say it that way. So Derek, you would be first, Pineda will be the one giving the oath of office. We'll take photographs in between each one and then move on to the next. Right there, Squid.
Go ahead and please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Derek Elliott.
I'm Derek Elliott.
Having been duly elected.
Having duly elected.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly violated.
That I have not knowingly violated.
Any law related to my election or appointment.
Any law. Repeat again.
Also, Dennis.
Yeah.
Any law related.
Any law related.
To my election.
To my election.
Or appointment.
Or appointment.
Or cause it to be done.
Or cause it to be done.
By others.
By others.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Myra, did you get the photos you needed?
Except for the group photo.
Okay, at the end.
I believe we're doing one with each.
Right, and then at the end, are you going to do the whole?
Yes. Whatever Lynn tells me. Yes.
Okay.
And get a couple photos, a couple photos. If we want the existing councilor or do we want?
We'll do the singles right now and then we'll do everybody at the end.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Councilman Garner? Yeah!
Okay, I was, lesson learned. Please raise your right hand. I, Daryl Garner.
I, Daryl Garner.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming. That I have not knowingly violated. Any law.
Any law.
Related to my election. Or appointment.
Or appointment.
Or cause it to be done.
Or cause it to be done.
By others.
By others.
And that I will discharge.
And, oh, repeat that, sorry.
And that I will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
With fidelity. Congratulations.
Mr. Terry Patterson?
I listen.
I, Terry B. Patterson.
I, Terry B. Patterson.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly violated.
And that I have not knowingly violated.
Any law.
Any law.
Related to my election.
Related to my election.
Or appointment.
Or appointment.
Or cause it to be done by others.
Or cause it to be done by others.
And that I will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
However it wants to be.
If we want, if Daryl and Derek can come down, we'll get them one for each.
Yeah, then we'll do everybody at one time.
Maybe it's because kind of this way, everybody's in the photo?
Yeah.
Yes, they're over, you get them?
We'll come down, we'll come down. Okay, let's go down.
And then we're doing a group photo of the new council, correct? Is that what you're thinking, Steve?
Come down.
So three of you can stand, R four should stand on the bench, on the right. Thank you.
I'm standing right where I'm at.
There you go. And then you all need, oh. Okay, so shuffle. So you're in this one though. There you go.
There we go. Cheese.
Councilman Wells?
I move to go into executive session at nine oh five P M for Wyoming Statute sixteen four four oh five to consider or receive any information classified as confidential by law and to consider employment, right to practice, or dismissal of a public officer, professional person, or employee. Or to hear complaints and charges brought against an employee, professional person, or officer unless the employee, professional person, or officer requests a public hearing. The governing body may exclude from any public or private hearing during the examination of the witness, any or all of the other witnesses in the matter being investigated. Following the hearing or executive session, the governing body may deliberate on its decision in executive session.
Second.
We're going into an executive session, it's been moved and seconded. Clerk will open online vote, voting. Or do that, has anybody got any objection? You want to go in?
Yay. I'm not up yet.
Online voting is open. Councilmember Elliott?
Yeah, I'm not able to log in and log me out, but mine is A.
Online voting has closed, the motion passes with seven days.
Okay, we're in executive session.
If you, if you ever get in a meeting and you you have seen the timer, this little click that, and then you click login, if, so if, I thought that's where you were at.
No, I had it. I just had to turn it.
Okay.
You're going to be standing next to me. You have to change your seat. Barely get down.
You can sit there. You want to bat on it? She has, I can look at her like that.
I'm like
Oh, boo, boo, boo.
Oh, that's a lot of history. Oh. So, it's actually seventeen, yeah, three weeks.
I know I can.
But I am a good boy child.
She did.
Yeah, I see. Heard this morning.
The, I did a
Oh.
Hold the ball.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've never right. I'm so cute. For the emotions. Yeah. It just goes crazy. Are you I looked at Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Stay in the long line, or wait in the last queue. I have, I'll say it's a challenge. We run on that, we go to the portion of ice or what, so we would buy this crochet, um, challenges and labors and no, I'm just...
No, I put the outfits.
Did? I do like little, like, so I got this work. Uh, the other day, I'm running through, they're not like, okay, starting, they're, they're way ahead.
Yeah. I don't push it. He was our son, fifteen. Oh, she likes ranch.
Oh, for a boy?
I made everyone a... Six more stockings. And it had, I enjoyed it. Well, I guess you could say, children, you get a lot of grandchildren. But you definitely...
Yeah, we can't, we gotta go to the hall for a sit.
Those, those might chase, right? Yeah, I got about twenty of them.
I'm just messing with Gary.
Fifty-four, how many? I was fifteen, my kid, and she was, I started, I was nineteen, and I think I was seven, when you watched me. She was down front.
I'm not really...
That was every... She always... I'm proud, I know what they see, I can try.
Oh. Yeah. Oh, how fun is that?
That's, that's a lot of fun.
She had four of you.
Okay.
So I have a...
Yeah.
Yes, they don't get, and it's like, are you free?
But you, but you're gonna wrap that up, well, sure. We're retiring here, we go, or we take off here.
Wow.
And you, you don't have it, it's totally, it's like, it's over. Okay.
Oh, yeah.
So, I remember some of the people that we didn't do, I got a shirt over the top, and that's why I... Yeah, hey, hey, look, hey, that's amazing, hey, you see? Hey, look, look, this is, this is my really good thing, you see?
Everybody gets...
Yes, like, I, I, my apartment, it's, it's, it might, it's, it's, so I go with the main, I, I want to do the... I mean, I can't imagine, I remember it.
Go later, you're... Have a hard time getting...
Yeah. Yeah, the first, the first time it's...
No, I, I... That's why, oh my god, that's how I...
I'm telling you what, I'm telling you what, you're all bad. Okay.
Okay.
It used to be...
This was sent to me, this is...
My, my president said...
Oh, wow.
On Tuesday, Christmas, like, one just happened, so... Are you gonna show lunch, or is there...
Oh.
Yeah. So he was... I did not know, you were... Our department kind of got... It's ready, and I mentioned how we're doing higher than... We...
Okay.
And I... Oh, yeah. You were not... That's good. I didn't, I wasn't... I was so relieved, like, when I walked in, it was like a... I went, yeah. Yeah. All their life, brother, and... Very crazy, he's... Yeah. That's why, that's why. All of three...
There we left, and the next thing we left, and then...
So, yeah.
Wild, like, I'm out.
Like, four, interrupting me, and...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Right, I'm standing, you know, I'm all...
I couldn't...
I must swear, this time, it's not happening, it's not...
I think I'm...
I'll just... L A, L A, look at them.
Dallas, or...
I think, I think they wouldn't stop it. I think it was fine, we made the last... I think as long as you're not probably like, uh, this area, it'll be fine. Like, you got, like, two, nine, ten, first, go, I suppose, like, great.
They got Steve, don't worry, that's all.
Yeah, I'm sure, you know, you have to, we take, you know, if I talk to it the way, the first time, I'll...
Yeah, I know.
Marthy, I'm like, you're waiting for the bird?
Yeah, I'm good. It is kind of that way, you know? You just have to... It could take hours. It's gonna take twenty hours.
Sure, there's a couple of... There's people that's, you know, like, you know, like, somebody's...
That you'd be...
It just, we were seeing him, I guess. It's pretty big, he's playing here. Actually, there's something, something really like that, like it.
It's been a long, it's been a...
Yeah.
If you're gonna play in a cold...
It's, 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 uh, so, it's...
Oh, you're...
Not so bad, it's... Yeah, it's the same last...
Hey, I saw a couple, first, we... But I'm worried, but I don't know, it's weird, it's too...
It's not, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. If you have that, so, I'm trying to...
Yeah, I think, I would say this, I have...
You know, it's, 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 it's...
You crochet with your office, like, you do now.
Um, I get that, well, you actually did sign, I mean, they...
Yeah, I was like, well, this year's finished. It, although, what you are, lucky to make one, things, everything's... I watch that. He's like, wow, they're gonna...
You're like, I never...
She's like, she's like...
Yeah.
Yeah. I just think, you know. But, like, I would say, it's, it's, it's...
I like, point, yeah.
Yeah.
What is, they open it, and so, I just...
I'm just, yeah, so it's right by...
I was bopping in.
At like, breakfast. So I saw some that she had, I liked, so I'm like, maybe I have that.
There's a, some sites where you walk in, and you just keep out, and she's right, I know.
Big, old party, yeah. Yeah. That's all, I'm wondering if that... Um, Terry and I, and that's what I can show you, um... She told you, like, yeah, I met you, I checked you out before they could test me, cross. So, yeah, of course, we... Oh. Looks like we're very cheesy. Who else would, just, yeah, very... Oh.
Yeah.
They don't want us having, so I think it was white, yeah.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's...
Eight, four, ten, you...
Yes, because Aubrey's having orange, and like, it's...
So, anytime...
I think, I think, yeah, yeah.
Any...
And then, so, Aubrey's in orange, and you know, it's really, it's beginning, yeah. And, and she...
Forever, I did, and then I from the, like, and I, I need to, some screws, and it's like, right, right in here, is, I had it all, my sister...
That'll, well, maybe, maybe, yeah.
Up there, the, the person, and I, and I mean, I go, I, I, I just watch, oh, yeah. So...
Yeah, so, it goes...
Get, get, like, drink. Yeah. Wait, I'm... Yeah.
I'm a...
What I was... I, uh...
I don't think, so, like, I'm... And then so, her, yeah. She was, cause I was, no, where did he... Your mom's, oh, yeah. And she's...
So, she goes, wait, her, she's like, yeah, it's on.
Well, but, haven't you, then, you know, once you... Yeah, so, she's...
Yeah. I'm sure it's...
And he knew her, and she...
So, yeah, Debbie, that's, that's...
They, do they all want her to, or is that all they know? Hey, you... In the summer, I was like, oh, I almost got, I was like, I was like, thirty.
Above the hurricane, which is why...
I can't see, they can't, I'm like, I'm like, it's like, you could set, and she was so pissed.
So, um, if they're gonna move, just...
Never go...
You can't?
I've been sometimes, like, yeah, we can, sunshine, it's...
Do you... It's a... They don't look like that one, they're... They don't look like that. Crawling around, doing all that. So, true, I'm sure...
Boys, I can tell you, they have the boys.
They're...
And they're actually in there, or...
Somebody said that, do you hear it?
Say what?
They're, they're... They're, they're room late.
So, we have them now, and it does dogs, like, here, and they run from the door, it's all personal, it's like, it's a deep house, and...
They can taste it.
So, you know, the dogs, it's, you know, the door, the...
Well, there, it's right here.
Yeah.
So, you're trying to carry it, and she's, she's, and, you know, you know...
You have to add a rap already, huh?
So, I like, some of them hold it in the driveway, they're like, cause they, cause they have a spur, they kind of have it, I don't know, have it so... Old, and, you know, like, sometimes, because I, I, I pull up in front of the house, so, like, if you get in the front door, it's...
So then you went in the garage, right?
So then I, so then I...
They just watched it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
My nan threw down here, and he, uh... We'd go in the house, and pretty soon, he'd go, I don't know, I'm watching this, John, he over here, that's all the cameras, and I see him carrying this package out, the draft, and putting it in the pickup. So, when he got back in, I said, uh...
I go, wow.
He goes, how, how did you know that? When they said, dang, shut that off, you said you're watching. He's a tight camera. We got a guy at work that put him inside, cause he was smart, he was brave, and he put all those cameras in, and his dog was getting out, jumped in the fence, and stuff, and I, he didn't say, he didn't got these cameras, right? My dude was guarding six of them, so, they drive out, so, I'm, I'm sitting at the computer, and he's leaning over, and I'm like, what?
Are they trying to see?
I had no clue, and he went, hey, man, you should buy, take a half percent, or wrong with you, you should... Damn, you're gonna... I'm like, sure.
I care, I feel like, it's over, everything, yeah.
Not like, this is...
Me, okay.
It's not like, like, his dog.
Harpers motion. Remember cameras. So anytime someone wants to lie. Then you know. So long as you're out. A person. So. So it's just motion.
So are they? Were they zip, like, step over?
What? No, it's not.
Oh.
That were bad guys.
One minute.
Well, it's funny.
She told me that story.
This is really.
God. Oh.
Oh, we just. I'm metal. He's being built. I look at. I go back. And I sneak back anywhere. And I. So I was. Castle.
Oh, yeah. The bris.
Oh, man, I got. Grounded.
It's, it's technology's so cool, so they can't see.
Yeah.
My mom should've worked for the API. You can't shoot nothing.
What I used to raise one day, um, my sister-in-law. She was in the house, you know. Bruce, you know. She, she made down the. Drain. Well, getting down. Yeah, the middle of the night, well, Bruce heard her, she went out. Party or whatever, and so he was watching, so he stepped out. Down the door and he waited, so he was waiting by the drain. I watched her.
Go on that.
Trying to see how to bring it back in. So Janelle was like. Probably is. But she comes over the drain. So she comes, she stood up and he goes. You want me to give you a lift up? And she starts going like, yeah. Hi, Dad. Like, no. So I'm just.
That was. I never snuck out. I just. I would just take it like I'm. I, I should say it was. Yeah, but I just walk right back.
Yeah. David. On the two of us.
Where were you at? So we.
It's not. But it's.
I never.
Well, she didn't.
Sure.
Got a whole bunch of choices over there.
This is gonna be a while here.
Very happy.
Oh. And. Some type of. But. Yeah. I always. Yeah. Yeah.
This is. Where the. Members are compared over. First time in the house.
I mean, like.
So.
I mean, I feel like our. So.
So I walk out of. Look. You sit behind these.
Always with. Amazing damage. Really close together. But I feel like. Yeah.
There was one egg. And you have to go. So I hate.
Yeah.
Because it's. What happens is.
Well, I have to love it.
Yeah.
Like when you say it'll cool. It'll flow with the.
Yeah.
Anyone's just saying. Dry ice.
You go.
And then.
So they bought. They did. It's Dean. I will help. Thank you.
I remember I saw the. Was doing this street. Josh was doing. Dry ice. And, uh. He goes over there. Shook, shook it up a little bit. He's got the thing too tight. It shook up too much. By the time he said it sounded explosive.
Oh.
And he's. He's running all my legs. Oh, God, I'm going wild. We're.
Well, anyone.
Yes. Please see.
House. It blew up and. Two over. My dad was on the screen.
They had a good neighbor.
Oh, yeah. Were you in health? Or was it? Back. I had hours. Where to drive back. Be. And they could back. All these bees. Well, all. They showed it off. Come on.
Yeah. Or they. I feel like they. They insist. About. It is. And I thought. But I can also. The difference. Yes.
You see. Down in the pot. And I put to my.
Oh, yeah.
It'll be on.
Oh, very much. You would. You'd easily. You know, you're like, oh, I. I always. Got to.
Yeah. And he'd always try to fool me by fooling. Oh. You might say that. And who was it? Somebody else or someone that wrote? Yeah. We tried. It was Joe.
Probably.
Sure.
We all had a good.
Well, Joe was like.
Okay. Okay. This is what they like that. So I have every. You sound like.
No.
I, I.
What I'm saying. Watching everybody. We had my.
I think that.
So we went out. I was like, I'm out. For very little. And I went. All the bigger. Pretty soon. You know. I don't know. Looking around. I, uh. Uh, you know.
I love that one time. Sorry, I'll. Where did you forget what?
Well, he.
Got you. Oh, my God.
I was.
Come on.
Sounds like it was. You need to go free. I was.
Yeah. Any of their own.
Yeah. And then, uh, let me say. Needs.
No.
I graduated with two men. I was graduating. And where does he?
So. John. Who's that all? Well. Proud of half. I said, uh, John, I said, thank you. By the way. How'd you get them all out of here? He goes, oh, my God. He runs out, opens the door, and locks it.
He didn't.
I don't know how. Cause he didn't.
I get so.
There was no. They were standing on each other. Oh.
Doesn't live like.
Oh, man.
I like it. That's my wife.
I was.
He passed.
We had no. In our house. I had to make him stop. Just scream. Yeah.
That's. That's where I did. That's. I make up. I'll be back.
Yeah. Of course.
She did.
Yeah.
I love it.
There.
She told me. I swear.
Sitting in place. Doing. Where. Joey.
Those were the days. And then I built that crew.
Dog.
How about that? Man, the look on his face was like. Okay. No, I remember that. Yeah, I remember that. Yeah.
I just.
I mean. Oh, God.
Pretty.
I'm telling. Yeah. Bigger old.
And he's one of the game now. He's on oxygen, but he still went hunting this year. Not, not as active like he used to. Um. He still goes right after the Debbie was telling me that. Top part of his oxygen. Man was out over it, but now I guess it's swollen up. Well, after. Yeah. First rolled up. Yeah. And I could. And I was.
They have it.
When the ER was there.
About.
About two days later, I told Debbie.
You're saying.
So much. I was like, everything they give you.
They used to do it.
They said, they should. And order. Well, the. He gets. Yeah. I know. Like. Two days. I, I. I, I. 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 I.
That's great.
I am.
I just put on.
But I, he did hurt that day. But if they are too late.
Yeah, I need that. We started. Cause he needed the pen. Oh, so then I got. Just try to have in the white. And I always left. And I.
Well, you're all. Okay, so now I. Damn it. Okay. I'm glad. This is.
No. National.
I, I feel better.
I guess.
Have people. Yes, but they. But they're not. I feel much better now. I'm not like. I was really. No, I were just good there. When they're. Yeah.
Cause they must be.
Okay. And that's a good. Why I feel so much better.
I was. I was getting hot.
I have to pay a bunch of. Give me.
But I was thinking, but literally, I feel so much. I was like. Why?
I really. We play. Our house. We play.
Oh.
Not good at it.
I was.
Oh, yeah. Come on.
I said. That's my dress now.
Very.
Yeah. She went off.
Someone washing them now. It's like.
You can't have. Well, it's.
Now I feel better.
Make a noise.
That's why I wore them. I have it. And then came back. It was like. Another hour.
Can't take you anywhere.
No. No. It's on mute for another hour. Forty six minutes. So. But has for the. Morning. I'll be.
It's nice. Oh, sure.
Sure.
There's like.
It's. Yeah.
Well, yes.
No.
He just slipped back. So.
I was trying to fall asleep.
Right. We do that all the time. But they text the time.
So, yeah, I forget the next morning I don't get up. And you're like.
Twenty minutes.
They went to. Into their.
Yeah.
I would.
So I have to. I have to push this.
There's a lot of.
Well. We're. They gotta be a lawyer service. And then.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a bit like hardcore. But, um. They have a chance to pay out the receipt. And I paid it. And I told Lucas to check his email. And remember, which is about.
You know, all that. Cars again. And then they go back in. I forgot to. I. They're all in my cards, but I forgot to.
And I was like.
To. Send the. Oh, so I. That was. Show this.
Yeah.
She don't. And then she like. That's.
I, I do, but I don't.
But I don't.
That's.
So much.
Uh, this is. Very.
Exactly. I was.
There's. Yeah.
So.
I.
I'm about the same. Thanks.
Here.
Um.
This is.
That's a little bit. At first he could just. You're.
He'll pit.
So then.
Yeah.
He was. Then she just expanded.
We could. Part of it. We were. I'm not.
Yeah.
Here's.
And I don't. Which I will say. It's. I mean. I. I. It's really. Remember. She did.
She. She thinks. She thinks. And everything is all for. She makes.
Yeah.
And she made it.
Like said. We never.
Well, the.
I was. Jeremy.
Yeah.
This is.
We don't.
How that's. Yes.
Uh. This. So. Why? There you go. Like. You. All.
Breaking.
Nah.
Yes.
There's. Yes.
They're. Always like. Why you didn't find?
They got us. Okay. So I was. I guess. I guess.
And.
They're.
Or they said, no, they said, we're. They.
How long here it is?
Now they. So they just do some business or. Yeah. Very exciting news. We have. And it's amazing. Toleranceless.
I think he's like.
Any cardio and everything. And all to everyone's pleasure that. You know, it's a problem. The. They.
Especially. It was long. I don't know if you already did.
Yeah.
Don't.
These are different.
Yeah. Yeah, so if you said, you know, if there's two guys getting in the car or anything, something. I'm good with. If he gets elected, you go to work. Why didn't I? That's how I feel. Well.
Their vision. Is.
This one. People are. Well, and. People want to know where you're at. We want to know. Yeah. Well, yeah. In Gillette, right? Western. It's crazy. Like.
They don't. Very. Their.
They're. Trump. Yeah. No. Streets. So he's like.
Um.
And. Oh, I'm sure. Yeah. You know. Yeah.
Even after.
Oh, giant.
And I expired in. And. Two thousand ten and then expired like two thousand one. It's your. It's not to be.
So what? Your kids. Junior, right?
No, this is.
If this has an Ohio.
It doesn't say.
By the third and ten series.
Well, I don't know.
That is the best life experience.
I. I don't.
We need to make it. Okay.
Yeah. If this.
And just.
Anybody. I don't know.
So.
And then they come back.
Well, it's.
Yeah. This is not that.
It's very.
I stood. I'm. And everyone. You look at.
Yeah. No, but okay. So I did. I. Third.
Here's like they go to sleep. His hands.
Wake up, computer.
Which was.
It's not.
This is the worst part. Trying to remember the hundred password you put in this.
Yeah. That's why I cheat.
All right, let's see. Inside now. This side. This is gonna be a computer, I guess. Now, just a little. Which is actually nice because you don't have to have this. Password system. I've typed it four times tonight. And I forgot.
You have ballots?
Well, mine stayed on there. This is logging. I don't know how to tell. See.
Okay, I need a motion to come out of executive session.
I have motion to come out of executive session at nine fifty-five P M.
Second.
We have a motion to come out of executive session at nine fifty-five P M. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, would you open online voting?
Online voting is open.
Yay. Derek Allen, yay.
Come on.
Online voting is close. The motion passes with seven yays.
Okay, we'll be moving on to appointment of mayor to serve as the city of Rawlins mayor for the term of January twenty twenty-five through January twenty twenty-seven. Ms. Lynn, can I have ballots, please?
You okay? I think it's right on the other. Push what's the phone. Good? Yeah. I got one vote. One vote really neat. See. Do you need this? This is. I'm gonna get one too.
So for mayor, we're serving for the city of Rawlins from January twenty twenty-five through January twenty twenty-eight. Jacqueline Wells received four votes. Vice Mayor Steve Sanger received three votes. So we have a new mayor.
Switch, switch. All right, get a water.
Which one? You three?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
It's on that ten. Right there. Thank you, guys. Next, we'll move on to item E. Approval of the and voting of the vice mayor to serve as the city of Rawlins vice mayor for the term of January twenty twenty-five through January twenty twenty-seven. Lynn, will you pass out the? Ballots?
Thank you. Thank you.
For the city of Rawlins vice mayor serving from January twenty twenty-five through January twenty twenty-eight. Darryl Gardner received five votes. Steve Sanger received two votes. So the new vice mayor.
Thank you.
Moving on to item F. The Rochelle Ranch Golf Course Advisory Board Appointment. Do I have a motion? Councilman Garner or Vice Mayor Garner?
I move to appoint David Gray to the Rochelle Golf Course Advisory Board for a term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven.
Second. And would like to hear from David.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council. My name is David Gray. I have lived here since February. Moved here from Oklahoma. Got a background in bowling management, casino management, like this. I noticed there was an opening for a long time. But maybe you said, ah, it might be something to head out.
Great.
Kind of be more involved in the community also.
All right, thank you, thank you. Do we have any discussion? All right, Lynn, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open. Online voting says close. The motion passes with six yays and one abstain. The one abstain was council member Elliott.
Congratulations, David. Thank you for your service to our new board or to our board.
Thank you.
Moving on to item G, approving of a new twenty twenty-five application for bingo slash pull tab gaming license application for the Rawlins Senior Center Advisory Council. Do I hear a motion? Councilwoman Lumen?
I move to approve the Rawlins Senior Senate. Senior Center Advisory Council, Carbon County Senior Services, Inc., for a new bingo pull tabs gaming license application with license in effect until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Is there anybody that would like to speak on the matter? I know I recognize there's a few senior center. Representatives. Okay.
Can have a bingo one day.
Awesome. All right. With no other discussion, please open online voting, Lynn.
Online voting is open. Online voting is close. The motion passes with seven yays.
Congratulations, ladies. Moving on to item H, this is the approval and restitution for expenses incurred in responding to and extinguishing a fire on July sixth, twenty twenty-four. Do I hear a motion? Councilmember Sanger?
I move to authorize the city of Rawlins to submit a restitution request in the criminal prosecution action by the Carbon County Attorney's Office in relation to the fire that occurred on July sixth, twenty twenty-four, caused by the illegal use of fireworks to seek recovery for all eligible expenses incurred by the city, including but not limited to water, labor cost, equipment usage, and other associated emergency response expenses.
Circuit.
We had a first and a second. Attorney Mayberry, would you like to present?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Honorable counsel, Madam Mayor, this. The. Sorry, trying to get my. On July sixth, twenty twenty-four, this past year, there was a grassland fire that was caused by the illegal use of fireworks here within our city. This did cause the biggest fire that our city has ever had to, that our city has ever experienced. There, there were significant emergency response efforts and the county attorney's office is now prosecuting that matter and has reached out to the city to see if they are interested in seeking restitution for damages. There's two portions to this. One is damages to the actual property, but there is also, you know, potential requests to ask for reimbursement for the emergency response efforts. This is not something that the city has, that I understand the city to have sought before, but because this does involve criminal actions that were, and the response effort was due to those actions. I've done quite a bit of research on this and this is something that has been pursued before by multiple other municipalities, counties, states across the nation. And if the city would like to pursue that, I have prepared the numbers for what the restitution amounts are. Restitution for the Rawlins Fire Department in between man hours and the vehicle, the use of the emergency response equipment, that total is thirteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Public Works also had several man hours. Water usage and materials to, there has provided an estimate for materials and labor to be contracted out to repair and replace the damaged fencing. Currently, that property is still technically a salvage yard and isn't zoned industrial. Under the state and federal regulations, it is required to be fenced by opaque fencing materials. So that's what this would, that materials and labor would cover. Materials and labor are approximately twelve thousand dollars, twelve thousand two hundred dollars. Water usage, the city was able, and I can, if you would like more information, Cody Dill is available to respond to the amount of water that was used. While there's not a meter directly there, they were able to calculate the estimate based on averages, about five hundred thousand gallons were used. Using our current water rates at the rate for those five hundred thousand gallons, that's about twenty-three hundred dollars. And then there were also utility staff that were on site that had to address the, the issues. Rawlins Police Department also supported the efforts with man hours, vehicle hours. And so I did put a quick summary at the bottom. Total city man hours, two hundred and seventy-one hours and fifty cents. Total vehicle hours, ninety-two point five vehicle hours. With all of those costs, we are looking at about thirty-one thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. In, in expenses the city had to incur in as a result of responding to this emergency incident.
Do I have any discussion?
I do. I think that a lot of maybe good things happened out of that. There was some fire hydrants that were not functional at the time. Is that correct? Was it like two or three?
Pass them.
Fire hydrants?
The mic on two.
Not functional?
I'm a mayor.
Yes. Thank you, Ellen.
I'm a mayor and council. The hydrant issues we had that night, we were attached to a hydrant and tried to turn it off so we could extend that line. And that hydrant failed while turning it off. So we never lost water. We just couldn't turn the water off to extend the line yet. So there was never a waterfall problem.
Okay. And I think with the, with the, I would say destruction, because it was a fire on that property, the city was able to obtain the property at a very low cost, I believe. I think the, the person, I don't know who it is, I think, in my opinion, they should be punished for. You know, creating fireworks within the city limits, they need to be punished with that. I think they should also have some restitution, but I don't know that. I don't know what the dollar figure would be really, because you could also consider it training on the fire department. We haven't had a fire like that for a while. I don't believe so. So you could look at it for, as training purposes. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilman Gardner or, sorry, Vice Mayor Gardner?
Under the alternatives, it says adopt a cost recovery ordinance that allows the city to bill individuals' emergency response costs in specific circumstances such as when illegal or negligent activities necessitate taxpayer-funded emergency resources. If we. Adjusted the motion. The lower payment back for, you know, the penalty for using the fireworks and then maybe a percentage back for the total cost and then put this in, would that be the recommendation from staff? To, to get something like this adopted?
Well, in order to adopt this, it would be to adopt an ordinance that has a cost recovery. And to give a little bit of background, there are several municipalities around the country that have cost recovery ordinances that are built in if there is an incident that is caused by illegal or negligent activities. So for example, this particular instance involved the illegal use of fireworks or the alleged illegal use of fireworks. And for example, in Boise, Idaho, there was an incident where an individual was convicted of the illegal use of fireworks in town. The restitution amount in that incident was three hundred and some thousand dollars. In Mount Hood, Oregon, there was an incident that ended up burning down part of the national forest. So that incident had cost municipal, county, federal, and all those types of other agencies. And restitution was thirty-six point six million. So this is a type of incident that a lot of places take very seriously. So in regard to an or a specific ordinance, it would take, just as any other ordinance, three readings. The timing on this, the, the issue with this particular incident is that there is currently a trial set for this next week. And our time to get this, to submit these materials is very tight.
With the.
Point of order.
Oh, all right. I apologize.
Point of order. You have to recognize him before he speaks.
Councilman Elliott?
Yeah, I'm trying to find how many gallons were lost at this.
Five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand gallons of water. How much have we lost with water line breaks?
How much have we lost with water line breaks? In the last year, was it greater than that? Yeah.
At this time, I don't, sorry. At this time, I don't have that number. We would have to look back on our records and tally water loss throughout breaks. It's very hard to do because what we do is basically track on a daily basis of what our water usage is in that there's a variable in there on a daily, on any given day. So to go, go back and look at every single day and every single water break and what that variable is, it's really hard to track how much we have lost in water breaks.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Sanger?
I'm not sure that these two things correlate to each other. Water breaks happen not because somebody lit fireworks. They happen because the ground shifts and we can't control that. So I, I don't know if these two things correlate to each other.
Councilman Lumen?
So I understand this correctly. This is just requesting us to seek this amount. This is not a guarantee that we will receive this amount, right? The, the courts will decide the guilt and the restitution, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Councilman Zilla?
The thing that people don't realize is our fire department actually ended up and saved a lot of other things. It could have been a lot worse than what it was. And also, I mean, they did an excellent job and saved a bunch of things that could went up real easy. So, I mean.
Any other discussion? All right. Will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open. Online vote, voting has closed. The motion passes with five yeas and two abstain. The two abstain with council member Elliot and council member.
Okay. With no further business to come before the council, council meeting will be adjourned at ten sixteen P. M. And we will have our next meeting here in the council chambers on January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. And I believe we're scheduling a work session at six P. M. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Congratulations.
Excited to work.
Want me to.
Yes, please.
All right.
Congratulations.
Congratulations on you guys, too.